We are called to order at this point, David. Are we prepared?
Sure. Go ahead.
If we can have a roll call, please.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Cohn? Not present. Commissioner Banton?
Present.
Commissioner Boas?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley? Not present. Commissioner Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Peoples?
Present.
Commissioner Reese? Not present. Commissioner Vines?
Present.
Commissioner Young? Not present. And Chair Stroud?
Present.
And you have a quorum.
Commissioner Young, Mr. Chairman, is in the building will be joining us in a few minutes.
First order of business is the approval of our meeting minutes from December 5th. I'll entertain any motions on those. If you've had an opportunity to read them, the packets were sent out earlier or late last week and should have had a chance to review them. Is it moved and approved and seconded? So can we have a vote for approval?
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas? Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Vine?
Aye.
Chair Stroud?
Aye.
Motion passance with six ayes and one of center.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Two, just housekeeping in a way. One is an apology. The meeting we're having tonight is actually the regular monthly meeting for January. We chose not to have it last Wednesday night, but having it tonight. Roman has done advertisements for the public hearing well in advance for tonight and for this time. That's good. We've satisfied all state requirements for sunshine and posting. We satisfied the letter of all things that we do electronically and that we're posted on the city's official website. But we were customarily in two places on that website. We were not in one of those places tonight, today, until later this afternoon. So we apologize for that. The impact on tonight's meeting is that we're proceeding with tonight's meeting. There's one item that is a public hearing. That's what Roman is going to present. It's sort of one of our standard things that we do periodically with the City Strategic Land Use Plan. We would normally, if so standard, close that meeting, that public hearing tonight. We're going to continue it to a future meeting, then close it, and then take up the action and not do that action tonight. So that's part one. Part two is, this is a pretty extensive meeting with a lot of detail. We're going to try to be quick through things that are pretty common. So be prepared for that. And we're going to, at the end, something we do quite rarely is request for a brief closed session. With that, Mr. Chairman, floor is yours. Roman does the first item.
All right. We'll invite Roman to have the presentation and following that, for those that are not familiar, we can open up for public forum and we'll close it after that. So Roman, it is now your turn.
This first item is proposed amendment number 18 of the City Strategic Land Use Plan, or SLOUP as we call it. And there are two agenda items related to SLOUP amendment number 18 on your agenda. The first is the presentation in a public hearing. I'll make that presentation tonight. We'll have a public hearing. The content will be continued at a future meeting. And I guess we'll postpone the adoption. Just by way of background, we only have a couple of new planning commission members. The City Strategic Land Use Plan is the general land use plan for the city. It basically recommends what types of uses be allowed and designates for each city block in the city a strategic land use category. Those are listed on the left under the legend. The current SLOUP map is shown on the right and the larger scale version of it is off to the right in the corner of room. Let me briefly go through those legend items and make sure everybody's familiar with those 10 items. The first two are primarily residential in character. Neighborhood preservation area and neighborhood development area. Preservation areas tend to be stable areas where things are pretty much in good shape. The neighborhood development areas shown in orange are those that require some significant intervention in terms of development opportunities. Next two categories are primarily commercial in character. They're shown in the pink and red colors. Neighborhood commercial areas tend to be located along arterial streets while the regional commercial areas are at major intersections and near interstate highways. Fifth category is recreational open space, which tend to be parks, cemeteries, things of that nature. The next two categories in the two shades of gray are primarily industrial uses of the sort or another. They're primarily located, as you can see, along the city's riverfront. Eighth category, shown in blue, is the institutional areas. Those range in size from SLOUZ campuses or Barnet Field Hospital to smaller churches. They're scattered across the city. Ninth category is specialty mixed use areas. These tend to be a mix of uses. They're primarily located, as you can see, along the city's central corridor. Last category is an opportunity area. These are areas that are in transition in which a number of different uses could be appropriate at those particular sites. The Strategic Land Use Plan was adopted back in 2005, so it's about 20, sorry, 15 years old or so. It's been amended 17 times to date. We generally do it once a year, although the last time, I believe, was about two years or so ago. And basically, the SLOUP amendment is changing a site's strategic land use category from one category to another to reflect some sort of a change that has occurred at that particular site. It's not intended to be a complete review of the SLOUP map. It has to take a lot of time, the good healthy and notorious changes that have occurred. And the SLOUP changes are based on two criteria. Either action items that were previously approved by the planning commission since last general update, when that development project has been approved, or when the Strategic Land Use Plan adjacency rule was used, or incremental development projects that have occurred in time. So these are the 15 proposed changes as part of amendment number 18. The table shown there lists for each of those a description of the development project that has occurred, its address, neighborhood it's located in, what its current strategic land use category is, what we're proposing it be changed to, and the PDA number in which the planning commission previously reviewed that action item. There's 15 of them. They're scattered throughout the city. They're not in any particular order. And what I'd like to do is to go through each of those 15, show you some maps that show both the current category designation as well as its proposed category, and then show an accompanying photo of that particular development project. So the first one is the conversion of a school building into apartments. It's located in 100 block of Anne Avenue near 7th Street in the Soulard neighborhood. As you can see on the map on the left that is identified by the title existing in SLOUP, the site currently is a mix of institutional, shown in blue, and neighborhood commercial, shown in pink. As a result of that conversion of that school building into apartments, we're proposing, and this is referring to the next map under proposed SLOUP, that it be changed to a neighborhood preservation area reflecting the fact that it's now being used for residential purposes. So this is some photos of Lafayette School. It's now known as Lafayette Lots for children and adolescents and apartment developers. Second site is the construction of a strip shopping center located in the 3600 block of Page Boulevard in the Covenant Blue Grand Center area. It's located near the intersection of Page and Grand in an area that has lots of commercial uses. We're proposing that it be changed from neighborhood development area, shown in orange, to neighborhood commercial area, shown in pink. Using photos of the strip shopping center. Unfortunately, when I took photographs, it hasn't leased up any of the storefronts yet. So hopefully, things will change for the better in the near future. The third site is another conversion of a school building into apartments. This is located in the Flat Avenue in Shaw neighborhood. We're proposing that be changed from institutional to neighborhood preservation. This used to be Sherman School, was closed 20 years or so ago and has been converted into Sherman Law, I believe, by the same developer to Lafayette School. The fourth site and change is the construction of parking lot along the 4100 block of Shoto Avenue in the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood. This parking lot would accommodate visitors to the Chroma mixed-use building that was recently constructed at Manchester and Shoto. Would also help out with the overflow parking for the Grove Commercial District. We're proposing that the site be changed from neighborhood preservation to specialty mixed use, which is much of the remainder of the area is. This is a photo of that particular parking lot. Fifth site is the construction of an apartment building located at 17, I'm sorry, 715 Victor Street, along 7th Street in the Soulard neighborhood. We're proposing that it be changed from opportunity area in purple to neighborhood preservation. And this is a photo of that apartment building, pretty large inside. The next one is the construction of another apartment building in, this is located at the corner of Russell and Graboy. It's currently designated as a neighborhood commercial area. We're proposing that it be changed to neighborhood preservation area. And this is a photo of 1400 Russell, which is the name of that particular apartment. The next site is the construction of an institutional office building. It's located on Van de Venner Avenue, 1000 block, again, in the Covenant Blue Grand Center neighborhood. Currently has two designations. We're proposing that it be changed to institutional preservation. These are some photos of the Deaconess Child Wellbeing, which was recently constructed and funded by the Deaconess Foundation. The next particular site, number eight, is the last of the school building conversions. This one is located on Wisconsin Avenue, a couple blocks south of Cherokee Antique Row in the Villa neighborhood. We're proposing it be changed from institutional to neighborhood preservation. This is a photo of Shepherd School and it's in the latter stages of its conversion project. This ninth project is a little different. It's the commercial district revitalization of Morgan Ford Road. Marshall Street on the north to Filer Avenue on the south. As you can see, it includes five or six blocks. Obviously, Morgan Ford has gone through a lot of improvements over the last 15 or so years when many of the both commercial storefronts and residential buildings were vacant. They've now been improved. We're proposing that the entire script be changed from a combination of a neighborhood development area and a neighborhood commercial area, I'm sorry, neighborhood preservation area to a neighborhood commercial area. And as you know, there's a fair number of residential and commercial uses along that particular strip. And the neighborhood commercial area will still accommodate residential uses. So there's no fear of any problems for someone who's residential. So Roman, the commonality of the first eight you've seen is that the previous eight have been to the planning commission before in relationship to another actual item that was before them. That's correct. And these are ones that we were just keeping an eye on in the geography and now are making a recommendation to. That's correct. Going back to Morgan Ford, this is a mixed-use building that's currently under construction. It includes two floors of residential uses, a ground floor commercial, as well as indoor parking. Tenth site is the construction of single-family buildings and townhomes along Dolman Street, backs up to Truman Parkway, for those of you who take that route to work. And it's only that it be changed from neighborhood development area to neighborhood preservation area. These are some photos of those buildings recently constructed. Level site is the construction of some apartment buildings on C.B. Banks Avenue, Van de Venner neighborhood. This is part of the North Sarah Apartments. We're proposing it be changed from the north, I'm sorry, from the Beltman area to neighborhood preservation area. These are some photos of those apartment buildings and they have really transformed that particular part of town. Site number 12 is the construction of some infill single-family homes along Henrietta Street, just south of Carey Park in the Gate District. The developer is focusing in on developing homes along the three sides of that particular park. And these are some photos of both newly built homes as well as those that are still under construction. And it's a batter-up project. Number 13 is the construction of three single-family homes on Fisher Avenue, near I-55 in the Condelet neighborhood. We're proposing it be changed from neighborhood development to neighborhood preservation. And these are homes that were developed by Habitat for Humanity. Fourteenth project is the construction of some townhomes along South Broadway, along the city's riverfront. We're proposing that it be changed from neighborhood development to neighborhood preservation. Photo on the left shows the first phase of the Mississippi Bluffs project. And the photo on the right shows the second phase of that particular project, which was developed by a different developer. And the last change is the construction of some single-family buildings along South Broadway, just north of Chippewa Street. And again, as many of these are, is proposing the changing of the designation from neighborhood development to neighborhood preservation. These are some photos of those particular single-family buildings. So that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The next step is to actually formally have the public hearing. It would follow PDA standard rules and regulations. Public notice ads for the public hearing. There are the two publications on December the 18th. And the maps that are included as part of your resolution were included on the PDA website. We have not received any comments as a result of that posting on the PDA website.
All right, for the public hearing, any questions from the commissioners that we can interplay? Commissioner Boyd?
Sure. So it looks like a lot of development has already been done. And so we're circling back around to designate it as a zoning criteria that fits what was already done. Is that correct?
Yeah, for the most part.
And so these, I guess, went through zoning for conditional uses or something like that?
Some of them may have. Some of these may have been rezoning items that the planning commission reviewed. Some of these may have been redevelopment plans that were reviewed by the planning commission and ultimately approved by ordinance.
Okay. So I understand the opportunity area piece. So we go from opportunity area to whatever designation.
I see your hand.
So I'm clear on that. But then there were some designations that went from neighborhood preservation, went from development areas to neighborhood preservation.
That, that-
For new members specifically. I think I might know the answer, but I'm not. Go ahead.
So again, neighborhood development area tends to be an area that needs some sort of intervention in terms of development and rehab, reconstruction, what have you. Once that happens, once a certain threshold is reached, we're making a recommendation that it be changed to a neighborhood preservation area to reflect the fact that that block is in better shape.
Okay.
And that's probably the most common type of change because it's probably, those two categories probably reflect sort of gradations of conditions within a particular land use. So if the property is in bad shape, it's neighborhood development, and it's improved, it goes to neighborhood preservation. Now, if, just to draw the parallel, if it's a neighborhood commercial area, it may be in bad shape, but it's still a neighborhood commercial area. If it's improved, no change really happened. So that's why you tend to have more of these changes from a neighborhood development area to a neighborhood preservation area.
Right. So in saying that, let's go to Morgan Ford.
So let's just be careful. Before we get to Morgan Ford, all the ones that you saw, we've seen before, we've acted on because there was a rezoning request or a chapter 99 or something. We ruled on them and we used something that was your powers of the adjacency rule. But the building itself, or the site itself, might have been an institutional use and we approved it to be in compliance with the activity with the surrounding area. We're now updating the map officially.
Okay.
And then Morgan Ford is a good example of a little bit more proactive.
Okay. So let's go back to Morgan Ford and explain it again. So we went from neighborhood development area, so we want to do that whole corridor now neighborhood commercial. And it hasn't been developed, right? We're just priming the pump for all commercials, is that right?
There was a mix. There was a mix of neighborhood development and neighborhood preservation. Totally.
Pink.
Right. And so, can I, I think you and I might have some of the same questions.
Go ahead.
Like, I struggle with this fairly regularly when we make changes. We make changes that are reactionary. And I understand, like, the SLOUP is our strategy.
Right.
Where we aspire to see certain types of development happen. And then we have our zoning, which is separate from this underneath. Right? And then we have, you know, layers of zoning on top of the zoning, you know, that are SUDs and the like. My, and I don't know if maybe this is where you're going, Jeffrey, but my question in terms of comment, you know, these all seem to be very reactionary changes, which, you know, the redevelopments are done, it's a done deal. Morgan Ford seems to be more kind of like proactively looking ahead. But, you know, I take a look at the map from a citywide perspective. We are sitting, you know, talking about these changes again. You know, but where is the analysis in terms of where we want to see institutions in the city of St. Louis? You know, where is the analysis in terms of, you know, Chippewa, you know, is almost entirely in a neighborhood preservation area when if you drive down Chippewa, most of that could be developed as a neighborhood commercial corridor. You know, similar for Merrimack, similar for Virginia. You know, where is the strategy part of the economic development strategy that is being done?
Oh, pardon, but-
And not in our case.
So a couple things. Absolutely. Is that we did not have a valid city plan that was for land use that we used other than the 1947 plan up to 2005. At 2005, we went with consultants and some staff, looked at every parcel in the city of St. Louis and consulted with every alderman and came up with what we could do as a step to create a citywide aspirational land use plan, which had those 10 categories. Those 10 categories are still, when we look at the city, they're meant to be almost a 30,000-foot because it's not generally individual parcels. With one exception, for legal reasons, institutions will show up as individual parcels. And they might be in the midst of a block that we've said should be, is a stable residential area. And when the map says it's a stable reservation, stable residential area, the aspiration is that that continues to be a stable residential area. Those earlier ones on here, if there was an institution that was sold and is now becoming a school, we, the planning commission, voted on that, said yes, it's in keeping with the, we didn't have a public hearing, we voted on it. And then you made the correct observation about Morgan Ford. And Roman made a choice, this has taken a couple of years in the running to do. This used to be something that Dick Zaraga would do, the sort of pedestrian annual update. And without Dick around, we haven't been able to do that. We also don't have the resources to do a whole 10-year into it or 15-year into a reboot of looking at everything. So we've looked at some, like the one on Morgan Ford. Roman showed you a picture of a building that was under construction. That gave him a catalyst to go out and look. And then we said, you know, Morgan Ford is really not that mixture anymore. It's really a place that we're aspiring to be a commercial. So let's ask you to make that whole area be commercial. You're not getting much depth about that in terms of analysis, but that's what we're asking you for. And let me add that in the case of Morgan Ford, that stretch is all zoned commercial. So again, so we're not imposing any hardship on any current residential property owners or people who intend to do residential developments. They can do residential or commercial, maybe it comes to the existing zone. I would tell you that this was a mistake to be categorized the way it was.
I agree with that.
Yeah. It should have been aspirational to be what we showed them.
And that's, I think, where I struggle with this. To me, it does not represent what we as a city, you know, from aldermen that I work with and with the true administration, Doug Mall, you know, have the pleasure to work with, you know, would say that this is what we envisioned. And, you know, I mean, further, you know, even from the tactical play of things, you know, I mean, Grabway Park on here, you know, the neighborhood preservation area, but by and large, Grabway Park, you know, even particularly, you know, 10, 15 years ago, was then much more shaped than it currently. And it still has a huge vacancy, you know.
Yeah. I will, I will gear you a little bit to what Roman was saying about the orange and the yellow. Is, you know, for instance, there were some streets in the city that had major commercial operations and industrial uses years ago. And they've since, some of them have gone to China, those operations.
That's deemed.
Yeah. And some of those, so most of those that are intact neighborhoods were all residential. The neighborhood development component, the orange, got to be when it was more than 50% vacant. It was 50% vacant. We put the orange on the map so you could look at the map and have a reflection that, boy, some areas had a large opportunity for development. The yellow meant it wasn't necessarily 50% vacant, but it was an infill opportunity. But that was the general threshold between those two colors. The good news is some of those development areas have truly been developed and therefore moved in the stable category. So we want to reflect the map to that. The other part, of course, is neighborhood planning. Is when we do neighborhood planning, we zero in from the 30,000-foot level to the real specifics in a neighborhood. And that's the really help.
So, you know, I'm not going to believe it very much longer, but-
You're going to be invited back next Monday and have some of your same comment.
You know, but 50% is an awfully high threshold for a neighborhood, in a Chinese neighborhood development area.
Correct.
When most studies, you know, that I've read over the years say that, you know, once a neighborhood reaches, you know, 20% vacancy rate, that should be an alarming, you know, situation for, you know, for people to look at. You know, let alone in some pockets of South St. Louis in particular, certainly in many parts of North St. Louis, you have 30% vacancy rate. So, you know, those would be areas that I think we would want to try and concentrate efforts, you know, from a development perspective, from a strategy perspective on redevelopment.
And so that, I agree with you-
But once you reach a 50% threshold on vacancies, I mean, you're struggling to get anything in there.
Let people remind themselves of the city's blindness to that for a long time. So in 2005, by having the map behind you that had those orange areas and be able to wink, not wink, and say, those are areas that are 50% vacant, was pretty much inside baseball. People knew that, but it's kind of shocking to do that. There certainly is, as Patrick and the rest of us know that have been tracking vacancy, a consistency to those that are in parts of town that haven't been developed and changes, like in Dutch Town and whatnot. So for sure. I will say that remember, one of our key things is to be able to supplement citywide planning that is, with neighborhood planning, number one. And number two is our legal standing was completely suspect by only having a 1947 document.
I may ask one follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Could you, could the MVA be a stand-in for what, no, okay. So there's not a polish between me and you.
So.
Be residential first.
So, I'm glad you brought that up, because the other part that we don't do is aspirational. And so this is, to a degree, aspirational and to a degree reflective. It has withstood a court challenge quite successfully, I was actually happy about that, so that we do rename things to remind ourselves that this is the city's land use comprehensive plan. That's a legal standing, why we say that often. And Tracy, remind me what your primary concern was?
MVA.
MVA. So the MVA, the other thing is we don't measure change, is the MVA was supposed to be both a guidance tool, hey, look, on 10, there are a residential component to this, but it's based on 10 criteria. These city block groups, so there's 350 city block groups, are in this condition because of those. Why don't you target something that goes after the conditions in those neighborhoods was primarily residential? And then the other part is come back four or five years and see if you made a change from the city policy. So we're in the verge now of doing that comeback, to see whether we made changes in those city block groups. Through RFPs and development.
We do have a public hearing at this point. I would like to move that we open the public hearing. I am not sure how many we have registered. I would address two to three minutes by a person. Do we have anybody?
We don't have anybody registered. We didn't really anticipate it, the status.
Want to be sure that they have the opportunity. With that, and the public hearing is also now closed.
And then I'll add a corollary to, no, 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 Earl, just to be a caution or anything, we'd like to continue the public hearing to a future planning commission.
Okay.
Yep. So if you would close it, not close it, you just continue it.
Just continue it until?
Probably the February meeting.
The February meeting, okay.
Very good. And we should probably take a motion to do that.
Well, we needed a motion to open the hearing. You made a motion, there was no second or.
Yeah, the public hearing. I didn't, there was no vote to open it.
David?
Yeah, I mean, I would go ahead, move to open it, open it, and then move to.
I second the opening of the hearing.
Was there an original motion then?
Earl made the original motion.
Chairman made it.
Sorry.
Earl was not to do. Thank you.
You want to do real call?
Yes, we can call the vote please.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Chair Sather. Those who passes, the ball voting aye.
But that the public hearing is open, and we will now move to continue it.
There you go.
So making motions, continue it to the regular meeting in February?
Second.
Previous role.
Hearing, no objections to previous role.
And so, Mr. Chairman, with that, Mr. Chairman, with that, we'll not take up the action item for approving this amendment for this time. We'll do that after we close the public hearing.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda.
But I will use it as a brief segue to say, in December, the Planning and Urban Design Agency's budget was increased. CDA's budget was increased with general revenue funds that came from the proposition that included light rail, Eco Depot, so that we will be embarking on a planning program, hiring new staff to do that, and picking neighborhoods through a CDA selection process to do neighborhood planning. That's kind of exciting. And Mr. Chairman, the next item for, is also Roman's number five.
1947 PUD?
This item is the proposed establishment of an overlay zoning district, same unit developing district, or PUD is the acronym that we give to it. This is the review of the sketch plan. Sketch plan is the first step in the process after the planning commission reviewed the sketch plan to date, our recommendations or your recommendations forward to the Board of Alderman. They'll have to pass an ordinance that approves the sketch plan. And once that happens, the petitioner is asked to submit what's called a development plan, which is a more detailed document. And that will come back before the planning commission finalizes or any building permits are allowed. PUD process has been around for quite a while, we have not done one for about 10 years or so. Talk a little bit more about that later. So the Olive West PUD, which is the name of this particular, a five-acre site, it's located along both sides of Olive, Vanaventer Avenue and Spring Avenue in the Covenant Blue Grand Center area. It consists of 28 parcels, you can see, 26 of those parcels are vacant lots, and the remaining two parcels are vacant buildings. So this is a fairly lighted portion of town. This proposed development project is a very creative and unique one, and the petitioner is here tonight, and he'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later. It proposes the construction of 22 single-family buildings, five two-family buildings, a 24 to 36-unit apartment buildings, and the renovation of an existing building. The petitioner is Olive West Properties LLC, which owns all 58 of those parcels. Mr. Steve Trampy is principal of the firm, he's here tonight and will be available for questions.
Roman wants the next slide. So while we look at that site plan, just to see the multiple sites, Roman's going to go into this overlay. Remember, the PUD is to allow flexibility outside the normal zoning code. It comes to us in general, it goes into law, becomes an overlay, and then unlike other things, the detailed development plans have to come back to us, and we'll get down to the specifics. Roman's going to show you the things that are fundamental, they'll have to go to legislation. Steve is here to answer every questions, but I'd love for Steve, at this point, just give you a snapshot of saying, this is adjacent to Grand Center, and what's the big kernel of intent to be done by your development?
This is Don Keith Trampy. The alderman team is three of us, it's myself, Emily Paulister, and Jim Maloney. This is aspirational. We first worked on this together 12 to 14 years ago. And this is in, you know, Olive itself, this used to be common fields when the village of St. Louis was founded. And, you know, you needed a number of things to survive, you needed fuel, you needed water, right? You needed food, and you needed salt. And so this was the old salt road that went out. Olive is the oldest west, east, west, north road that went out to the Missouri River, where Daniel Bloom's family had a salt lake, and he trucked salt in here. And so you go from this being French farmer's field, this became a very exclusive residential area, south of Vanaventer Place. It then became part of the entertainment district, and you had some theaters, you had a lot of car, car places, all the houses were from the old park, and that torn down as well. And it became commercial, then it became warehouse, and then you came Darrell. And so what we're really doing is we want to take it back to really its first viable use after the farmers left, and do something that's very, very different. And of course, different poses all sorts of challenges here. For those of you who are familiar with Columbus, Indiana, Columbus, Indiana has a population of only 30,000 people, but most architectural polls and critics will tell you it's the second or third most important architectural town in the United States. Because what the President of Cummins Diesel Engine did there is he said, if you want to build a building, I will pay for the architectural fees, but you're going to pick an international architect. They have both aleo serenan and eros serenan projects, they have incredible, and so for those who, you go there and you can get a map, and there are 30, 40, 50 projects by architects from all over the world. It's the most remarkable place for a small town. So we really want to do this on a residential level. So today, we have, we have seven architects working on this project so far, four of which are of national, international prominence, and then three local architects. We will have some others, and what we eventually love this to be is that people come, really come all over the world to look at maybe examples of 15 different residential architectural styles by really remarkable architects. And so in keeping with that, we've also wanted to make it to where this isn't just a townhouse where you have to sell because you need to sell it for 400, 500,000. One of the reasons the site plan is arranged the way it is on the south side is that we can get, we can start at about $280,000, and that, you know, it's about 1,000 square feet, and we can actually, to get somebody in with really very unique architecture at a lower price point is pretty remarkable. The whole south side will be the largest courtyard probably that I know of in St. Louis. The entire south side of our project is one big courtyard with a public park out front. And so within that park, we have a number of unique features, the size of Bachi Court and basketball hall and table tennis, we have a mound, which is like kahokka mounds, we have a conversation pit, we have an edible garden, and between the garages, we have one area just for vegetables and one area just for fruits and a variety of things.
So Steve, I think with that, knowing that this truly is aspirational, Roman will walk you through the part of the presentation that says, yep, to be aspirational, we've got to bend the rules a little bit and set up this PUD.
Very good. So this is an aerial photo of the site. It's a couple of years old, so there's a couple of buildings shown on there that no longer exist. There's only two buildings currently, this is what is referred to as the Wolfher Building, and there's a industrial building located there. The remainder of the site is all vacant property. Again, it's a lighted site, but it's got a great location, as Steve said, to the east you have Grand Center, to the south of Lyndale is St. Louis University Campus, Central West End neighborhood is to the west, along with Westminster Place Development, and to the north is Cardinal Luther College Prep Campus, which was built about 10 years or so ago. And then immediately adjacent to the site is the Capa Attorney House, located at Vanaventer and Olive, a large AT&amp;T parking lot, and we serve E&amp;D Building, and this single-family building, which is off by itself. Just to the north, along Washington, is a mix of commercial, industrial uses, and just to the south is a mix of residential uses. So as you can see, the site highlighted there in black is zoned H-area commercial district, which is one of the more liberal zoning districts in the city, allows a wide variety of commercial and residential uses. In this particular case, though, petitioner decided that rather than request some variances from the Board of Adjustment, they would elect to apply for a planned unit development district to provide some flexibility that isn't available under the current H zoning district. I'd like to run a series of slides. This is Olive Street looking eastward, this is the Capa facility on the left, which is not part of the facility, large vacant lot, one of the two remaining vacant buildings, second building is there, the remainder is vacant lot. This is the site of the 24 to 36-unit apartment building located on the south side of Olive and Vanaventer. The photograph here shows the Wolfher Building, photo on the left shows its frontage along Olive Street, and the photo on the right shows the side elevation. Recently, the City's Preservation Board agreed to allow the demolition of the rear of this building, but the front of the building would be reused for multiple purposes. Just to the east of that building is a series of vacant lots that extend all the way to the next building, you can see how large this particular site is. On the north side of the street is the other remaining vacant building, it's industrial in character, and it will also be torn down. Just to the east of that building are these two large vacant lots. And then immediately adjacent to the site is the Capa Facility, shown on the left, AT&amp;T parking lot on the right. I've been out to the site a couple of times, I haven't seen a car parked there at any time, so I'm not sure if it's used anymore.
Not usable.
Not usable.
I haven't seen a car on it in 10 years.
I don't know how many people work in AT&amp;T.
Seven.
Oh, seven, building that size, okay. And then on the south side of the street is this historic building, which also has a large side lot, and that would be immediately adjacent to the PUD site. And then there's some photos of Washington and Westminster. As I mentioned, Grand Center and Westminster Place are also in the vicinity. So this is the site plan that was submitted by the petitioner. This is Olive Street, and the area including the PUD site are these lots here, this stretch of Olive Street, and this particular area. Steve, do you want to go, do you want me to run through it, or do you want to explain what your proposal is?
Whatever, you decide.
Okay. Yeah, I can do it. The south side of Olive Street here proposes the construction of 17 buildings, five of which would be two-family buildings, the remainder, the single-family buildings, as you can see, they're spaced, and some on the street, some they're set back, these are a series of courtyards that Steve was referring to with various amenities. Some display units would be built, and the property owners would then have the opportunity to select whatever site they wanted to build that particular unit. The ownership would only go for the building footprint of the particular site, the remaining area would all be controlled and managed by homeowners. At the corner here is the proposed 24 to 36-unit apartment building, that would be built, as I understand, by a separate developer other than the property owner. Immediately adjacent to that is the Wolfher Building, which you can see now is smaller in size. That would include a number of amenities, such as a fitness club, and some other items, as well as two condominium units on the upper floor. Those amenities, as I understand, would be available to the residents of the entire development complex, BVA renters or homeowners. To the north, on the north side of Olive Street, is a more conventional design. These homes would again be potentially designed by some of these architects, and I understand there'll be some financial incentives for those property owners to take advantage of those design services. And they'll be more traditional in the sense that those homeowners would actually buy both the building itself as well as the property associated with it. There is a provision in the PUD that if this particular layout is successful in terms of being able to attract buyer interest, that layout may be transferred to the north side of the street. The areas that you see here in green are bio-retention areas that are made necessary in terms of doing the development to meet the regulations of Metropolitan Sewer District. Steve, what do I?
We are curving the street to calm the box traffic, to make this a more residential block, so you'll notice that we're putting the curve in, it's similar to one by, it's one by City Hospital, I think, right? We have a circle, but we're going to slow the traffic through there for it to give it a presence.
Highway will be included in there as well, and Steve, you probably noticed in the resolution that the PUD doesn't have any regulatory power over the right of one side, in the extent we're making changes along the street, and the approval of the street department, as well as the treasurer's office, which has, believe it or not, parking meters along this entire stretch even over this. parking meters along this entire stretch, even those vacant land and along that entire stretch there.
Okay, a couple of questions. On the overlay, it stops west of the residential home and there's no, there's no extension on the east side of that. That's the first question. And then when we're looking at the aspirational plan, I don't see the residential home incorporated in this plan. Am I missing that?
Which, which, which single-family building are you referring to?
There is, there were residential that sit there.
Right, yeah.
And this is left blank.
Right.
But on here, I don't see the residential.
It, it's not included. The only areas, um, included in the PUD site are those that are, uh, marked by that, uh, black boundary line. So this single-family building lies outside of the boundary and isn't affected by the, this over. It's, it's a confusing block because what happens is Spring Avenue, if you follow the pointer, goes down this way and part of it intersects into Olive right here and the other part of it continues on, takes a zigzag and continues down, uh, towards Linder Boulevard.
So what's the impact to their residents that's still going to be left there and then this is this great, wonderful development?
Well, one of the things that, uh, and I should probably touch upon it now.
He's thrilled, by the way.
He gets new neighbors.
He wants one.
Yeah.
He owns the rest of the ground and he'd like to develop it commercially or to sell it to someone and it becomes a lot more valuable once we do that.
So let me refer to the, uh, the second bullet point halfway down. Where we're recommending approval of this particular PUD is one condition and that condition is that the petitioner provide adequate buffering or screening along the perimeter of the PUD site. That includes, uh, primarily, uh, the adjacent single-family home that you were referring to, that includes the capa facility off, uh, on the north side of the street as well as AT&T, um, parking lot. Now I think it's, uh, being a prudent developer, I think Mr. Crampy would have provided adequate buffer, buffering or screening without that particular requirement being included in there. But, um, we included that in there and as I mentioned, uh, we're mandating that that compliance with that condition be included in the subsequent development plan, which will be submitted by the developer and that the planning commission will be with you again. So, yeah, I think the interests of that particular property owner will be protected by that particular condition.
What is the reason for the buffering requirement? I mean, you got, starting to feel like this is going to be its own sort of island almost if surrounded by.
No, yeah.
Like, how is it going to be integrated into the rest of the neighborhood?
Well, I think the buffering is primarily, it's not intended to have this development be an island, uh, it's just to protect the interests of the adjacent property owners.
But I think to answer your question.
Yeah.
So the one buffer to capa, they're a commercial use and so we're residential.
That makes sense.
So our residential people would want to be buffered from the property.
Yeah.
The other end, the AT&T parking lot, which is an eyesore, we want to be buffered from that. Now, we've tried to, we still are trying to make a deal with them on the parking.
Absolutely.
To do that and it grinds on and on, uh, but the other thing, what's there is there's a nine-foot drop, uh, so you've already got a nine-foot retaining wall on that.
Yeah.
And on the, so let me, on the, on the south side, we go to the street, so we go, we go buffer there. And then against Matt Fossey, Matt, uh, who we've worked with and tried to buy his property for the last twenty years, is thrilled about it and he's always out looking for multi-family developers to develop and whether or not we can partner with him or not, but he, you know, he finds it to be buffered until he figures out what he wants to do with this property. He does.
And he owns the adjacent property.
He owns all property to the corner.
To the east of him.
To the east of him, correct. Yeah. So he, and he's, he's had a number of contracts from multi-family developers, but who's got, he's bought it, none of them have lived up to his expectations, so.
But they could take it for his desires.
But, so he, he is, you know, as I mentioned, absolutely thrilled because he's been trying to come and start in that block because he's the only one that's in the block right now. And to get anybody else living in the block, to get any other development in the block is really important to him.
So the, um, the south side of the project is predominantly going to be, let's just call it condoized, it'll be a homeowner association, but it'll be a, kind of campus, if you will. Um, so with common area, right? And the common area is all supported by the homeowner association. So is it going to remain open or, like, it's private property technically, right? How are you going to prevent people from coming in using the bocce court and, you know, I mean, is that entire block going to be fenced off?
That, that project will be fenced off except for the public park, yes. I mean, it'll be like doors lost, like a lot of them, and it's a private courtyard.
Right.
And we could never tell anything unless, you know, people walk into this garage, they're all the, you know, it's all the.
So the garages are all on the south side, facing the alley.
Correct, right.
Right. So it's detached garage still that are along the alley line and then the west of the block would be fenced off.
Right, right.
Okay.
And as, as you know, the only other two garage solutions you always have is front street entry, which eats up a little bit, you know, it's tight. Or you have rear entry and you go all the way to the house and you eat up all the green space in the back. So alley garages are really the only way to preserve, you know, maximize the green space and, and provide security to it. In fact, you can drive in the garage and come in your door and.
And all of, even though you're doing the kind of chicane effect where curving it out.
Yeah.
Will it be a two-way street?
Yes.
On-street parking?
On one side.
Okay.
The, the, part of the challenge here is.
Will the meters remain on the one side?
Uh, we're gonna, I don't know, we're gonna work on that. Um, one of the challenges here is, for us, is this is a huge MSD issue because their trunk line Vanderventer is way overloaded and they're making us not take it from where it is now, they're making us take it back and retain water as if the entire site was, was grass.
And you've got them vacant now because it's all ready.
Well, but even the ones, if we tear down the ones, I mean, they're still making us think it's farther than that. And so our challenge is without eating up all the green space for bio-retention is that's why we have a lot of bio-retention in the street, uh, because there just aren't enough, we're burying a lot of it, but it's, it's really, it's, it's been a real, that's probably been our biggest issue today is how do we give enough bio-retention to retain massive amount of water and not have everything look like it's just open sewers or retention areas.
Great.
All right, Commissioner Van, Commissioner Man.
Um, forgive me if you, if you address this already, but I'm trying to imagine the homes fronting Olive. Um, are the, are the front door entrances of these buildings facing the street and accessible by the street or will that just all be like gated in and then take water from the interior of the campus?
I don't know yet. There'll certainly be a door on all of the street-facing ones within the courtyard so they can go from the garage through the courtyard into their home. My guess is some are all and we'll have, we'll also have doors on Olive, but we're, we've been working with these four different architects. So the first four buildings just to the east of Wolfher, we have four different architects. That'll be our four display models. And so they're not worked out yet, um, in total design, so I can't tell you on, on the one that has a door now. Now, the pads are bigger, the pensive pads, so the buyer can slide and the architect can slide it around a little bit. So if you want to have, if you want to have your courtyard or your patio on the east or the south, I mean, we really want to build that in its flexibility, so that's probably also.
I, I guess, you know, and I know a lot and something needs to be flushed out, what I'm trying to imagine is like what the curb appeal will be like if you're walking or driving down Olive. Is it gonna look like there's a gated community, I wonder what's in there or is it gonna be this is a very, you know, visual, there's a visual impact.
There's, there's two public parks over there.
Right.
Okay, and then, but otherwise, you know, that's why we have the buildings, you know, unlike a lot of projects where you just line all the buildings up at, at the same fifteen feet back or whatever you're gonna do, that's why we've alternated them and there's, there's three different setbacks, right? There's two at the curb and then there's two different setbacks. So between those and the parks and the other green areas, it's a very in-and-out sort of thing. Now, to your question, you won't allow anything that looks like the side of a house to be on Olive. I mean, it'll certainly look like the front of a house, whether or not that person wants a main door there, I, I, we haven't really. My guess is all have doors on Olive. I, I just don't, just don't know at this point.
What are you calling?
Is it requiring? I don't know. I, I don't.
Does that come in the second part of the plan? That's what I'm trying to get rid of.
Yeah. I mean, I would think that, that's gonna be, would be flushed out when we come back to you this time.
That may be a building code issue like that.
Yeah, that likely don't, yeah. I mean, if you have, if you have, I mean, these are, you know, the small shit is only a thousand feet and it's only one story and so you're only, you know, it's not much, I mean, it's not like a complicated structure. So do you need two doors on two sides or do you need two sides code-wise? I, I just don't know at this point.
Commissioner Man.
What, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time following. Where are you calling the two public parts? I know that one down to the south.
I think he's referring to these two sites here.
All right. No, that one, the one on the left.
On there.
Where the curb on that is.
Yeah, the curb on them.
So those are two that are always going to be open and accessible to the public?
Yes.
By the way, one of the regulations for a planned unit development district is that twenty percent of the, uh, site is for green space and, uh, and that will basically, as Steve's calculations indicate, will be satisfied by those two parks and some of these bio-retention areas. Now granted, those bio-retention areas aren't very usable, but, uh, given the fact that MSD doesn't want to own those parcels and the city probably doesn't want to inherit them either.
They'll remain under, uh, the control of the developer.
Satisfied that twenty percent open space requirement in addition to the two parks.
And the capacity on the, the rental property on Vanderventer?
Yeah.
Where did, where are you looking at that?
Well, it's, we say twenty-four to thirty-six because one of the things we've tried to do on this block is have no surface parking, okay? Within the project. So that building is, is pretty much driven by how much underground parking we can afford to build, this is now. Now, along, you'll see along the south of the building, there's tent spots and those are for maintenance and service workers and guests or whatever. So, so we have, we do have some surface parking, but it's not on Olive and it's not meant for any, for residents that live there. They, they will park in, in the building.
And the admitting buildings, the Wolfher buildings, where are you putting your, your amenities for that building also?
Right, for everybody. Be on both sides of the street will have access to the Wolfher building. What are your amenities?
Let me also point out, uh, again in terms of the process, if the PUD is approved by the planning commission, approved by ordinance that we're at the Board of Aldermen's, the next step would be for the petitioner to, uh, submit a detailed development plan that will have a lot more of the, um, details aired out and, uh, provided that those details are in conformity with what's approved, at that point in time, they'll be able to, uh, request, uh, building permits from the building commissions. So the planning commission will have a second to review and decide.
Commissioner Boyd had a question and we'll come back to Commissioner Man.
Yeah, I'm trying to follow Olive reconstructed with the green represents. So Olive is now going like this, so what's the green?
That's all the bio-retention area, uh, where.
The light green.
Yeah.
The light green we're in. Right, but we have to be able to retain all of the storm water from the, from the whole watershed, not just this block, but, uh, other water that's coming from in the watershed. Uh, and, and really all of, all of the green that you see, uh, of that kind of lime green is really calculated and we've submitted MSD, uh, and that's how much we think we're gonna need to get their approval on the, on the storm water retention.
Sure, that's a lot of fun. Um, so on Vanderventer, that rectangle right there, that's a bio-retention pond, so is that gonna look like the ugly bio-retention ponds we have in my neighborhood with the wrought iron fence and it just looks like just can't stop green stuff or is it gonna be?
Green.
You know, some kind of architectural landscaping design that looks like people can actually do something in there?
Well, we, we will landscape it to the extent we can, can. MSD is really strict about what we put in it a lot of times, um, what we can put more around the edge as far as sculpture and, and bigger landscaping. I mean, we, you know, we want it to look more than, than just a dry grass lot.
With a.
But, but, but they are within the basin itself, they're, they're really tough to watch.
So you.
Have they given you a certain water amount that you have to retain on there?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't have it, it's, I mean.
And, and are you basically typing in, so you're trunked to get over there, so that, that basin has to support the runoff from, in your project in the PUD?
Only part of, a lot of it is also underground through the entire courtyard.
Right, so you're gonna trunk over to that, tap into the alley, because that's the alley that splits that, right?
Right.
And, okay.
Right.
So are you creating below the surface water retention?
Oh, yeah. We have to, otherwise this isn't, this would never work.
So in, in a generic way, it's a tanking system for water?
Uh, it's more of a dispersal system. We don't, because the, the, the difference here is between retention and, or between detention and bio-retention. And so, for instance, under the pool on the Wolfher down, there's a whole, uh, system put in under there that is collecting water and is pushing it down in, into the soil below. And we have to retain it. We can't retain it for a while, we have to clean it and keep it on the site, on the bio-retention site. So, and through about a third of the whole courtyard, the same way, we have anywhere from three to eight feet down, we have these, these dispersal systems put in that will collect the water and hold them. So the, the lot you're referring to is only a part of the system.
So I'm hearing from you a tremendous amount of cooperation with MSD, but it seems to me that MSD is requiring things that might have been above your normal expectation of what they might require?
Yes, but we get the project clear, a lot of it is reimbursable under the program. Because, yeah, they're making us retain other people's water, basically, and they're paying us to do it, but they're telling us we don't have a choice.
That's the benefit of the nicety there. Very helpful.
At this point, this is just our first bite at this apple. We're gonna have a whole, another full body of much more detailed information. So our, our action right now is simply to, to approve the, the sketch plan, uh, which, you know, I said, there's a lot of detailed questions, I know we have, but the question right now is where do we, you know, how do we pull the sketch plan of what he's got? I'll entertain any.
Move to second.
Move to second. Any objections to the previous rule? There ain't no objection to the previous rule, the sketch plans has been approved, which now it will go to the Board of Aldermen for their, their bite of it and then it comes, whatever they do comes back to us in full bite of the detailed plan at this point.
Yeah, so, so Roman will get into the Board of Aldermen by noon tomorrow through this session and, uh.
Wednesday's agenda? Is that on Wednesday's agenda?
It's Wednesday. Oh, no, no, it's not. For introduction.
Okay, okay.
Right, then Steve will be obligated to come back at the various times when he has more detail to do this development plan. But some of you will crave on the fact that we'll, we'll put plans down before you, you get to help question and deal with.
At least you know what you're going back into. Come back with detail then.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. What number you want to Roman next?
So Roman is, just to conclude, and we go to one, two, three, four, five, uh, items that all have a zoning aspect to them, a certain common denominator to them. It's a. Cecilia will present all of these, but before we do, cause Mary is here with a cast. We should ask Mary to introduce her direct staff and other people that's been associated with the zoning.
Um, so, doing this place, Robert is not my staff, but many of you know him. And he has a lot of our key business board bills that we're gonna talk about, or the proposals we're gonna talk about. Next one is Ralph Island, who's senior planner in our department. Next one is Dylan Mojer, Dylan is a planner in our department. And this is Kim and Erin Toddlin, and she is a new hire in our department, and she's a planner.
So, zoning has more planners than the planning department.
This side is Becky Wright, who's our legal counsel for the zoning department.
And Robert, would you do a little amplification of what your role is with City Council?
Okay. I am chief technology officer for the City of St. Louis, those small wireless deployment, the O C to technology, so like, uh, and the health of wireless communication within the city, how we handle them, spell on our microwave. And there's several different elements to it. There's what are we gonna do with these things in the right of way, on the street side block alley, and what are we gonna do with these things outside the right of way and outside the property? That's the latter that we're here to talk about tonight.
And then his portfolio was also look to these systems as to how to do them smartly and more.
Isn't it awkward, Warren?
So, so there's gonna be some technical stuff to, Cecilia's got the ball now.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As you say, you know, you're gonna have to speak up.
You got it. Uh, this is, and then I missed, is the city zoning code. I'm gonna do the big, the big Kahuna first, uh, and then the next three after that are similar in context and hopefully by that point we'll have a good understanding of what's going on. Uh, so, the Missouri City Legislature passed the bill, House Bill nineteen ninety-one in June of last year, yes, it's already twenty nineteen. Uh, and so it came into effect on January first of this year. As an overview of the bill, it rolls back the municipality's ability to regulate certain wireless facilities, specifically small cell and micro wireless facilities. We'll go into that a little bit. But it provides definitions for both of those terms and it allows us to only regulate them in primarily single-family residential districts, which for the City of St. Louis is the A single-family dwelling district. Shortly thereafter, uh, the FCC provided a declaratory order with similar but competing regulations at the federal level. So, since that time, the city's legal team has reviewed both sets of the regulations and found that the most restrictive is actually the state's legislation, so we are following those regulations. Currently, uh, you see the zoning table on the slide. Right now, we regulate all wireless facilities as regulated under the utility stations and utility towers use. And it does not have a definition at the moment, but that's what it's encapsulated under, and they are conditional in all residential and commercial districts, and they are permitted in districts I through L. So, we're gonna make some changes to that. The red line of the changes is here, there's a lot of red. So, I'm gonna go through these, break them off a little bit, but I wanted to see the big picture. Basically, we've added new uses, the definitions to explain more specifically which each of these wireless facilities are. We've added a definition for utility stations and utility towers, provide an understanding of what these are or basically what it's not, which is a wireless facility, and we've accounted for exceptions. Break it down a bit. Uh, as I mentioned, we've added new uses. We've added a use, and a definition for micro wireless facility. We've also added the same for a small wireless facility, as well as a wireless support structure. These definitions match exactly those definitions provided by HB nineteen ninety-one, and, uh, that's the state's bill. And we've added a new definition for the single use of utility stations and utility towers, which no longer includes wireless facilities now. Part of the House Bill, we can only regulate micro and small wireless facilities in primarily single-family districts, so they would not be permitted there. We've chosen to not allow them in the A district, and they would be permitted in every other district. Additionally, there's some language in HB nineteen ninety-one, which does not allow us to regulate even in the single-family districts, because that would be too straightforward. Uh, so things such as campuses, stadiums, and athletic facilities, even if they're in the A district, we cannot regulate them. That's what the obstacles is for there in the A with the micro and small wireless facilities. So, that's where unless otherwise exempted by the zoning code by state or federal law, then, then they're not allowed. Uh, so this also gives us some flexibility, instead of writing in each of the exemptions, where if the state or federal law comes in to make any future amendments, we have a flexibility to allow that and, um, regulate it on a case-by-case basis. Moreover, HB nineteen ninety-one defines, but does not have restrictions or prohibitions on the wireless support structures. Therefore, we have proposed to not allow these in residential districts, conditional, have them conditional in commercial districts and permitted in districts I through L. So, that's the first bit. The second bit is the changes in both that I'm gonna talk about. We've added a new definition for wireless facilities, and this is to regulate wireless facilities which are not defined as micro, don't fit the definition of micro or small wireless facilities. Uh, these are proposed as not allowed in the residential districts, conditional in the commercial districts, and permitted in all other districts. Finally, the city has received some requirements from the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency, the NGA, which is a federal agency, and it requires the most reviewed and only permit entities and activities within half a mile of a complex that are certified to be in full compliance of a code of federal regulations, it's CFR, the number is forty-seven, part fifteen, if anyone wants to know. And it discusses the communication devices and basically has a bunch of restrictions as to how close some inter, some, uh, radio facilities and various facilities can get to the facility. And so, this will allow us to ensure that we're in full compliance with those federal regulations as well. PDA staff has reviewed the proposed amendments and found that those proposed amendments are not in concert with the city's zoning plan, and therefore staff recommend approval of the citywide zoning tax changes. I'm also happy to answer any questions you guys may have about the thing.
Uh, very brokefield here.
Yes, that's good.
In the plain terms, can you tell me the difference between wireless, microwaves, and small wireless applications? Just so I have some real fundamental understanding of that.
Yeah, well, what I-
Or, or the tech, I'm gonna go, yeah.
Well, I can go into detail. I do have slides in my backup, but what I'll say is, it basically, the, the definitions each have very specific regulations about the size of the element. And it breaks it down as far as how big an antenna can be, how big, um, you know, some of the other components can be, how, you know, each element can be this amount of square footage, whereas this element can only be this amount of square footage in total, it can be this amount. So, that's how it breaks it down, is by size.
And application.
Uh, that's not application, more about application.
I'm saying, I can say what-
Yeah, it's about the type of structure and the size of the thing.
Okay.
So, for instance, you've got your standard, you've got your wireless facilities, which is the umbrella of everything. And then underneath that, you've got small and micro wireless facilities, so it's controlled by size. For instance, a small wireless facility, the antenna can't be more than three cubic feet. Uh, you know, the radio and bass cabinetry can't be more than nine cubic feet on a utility pole. Whereas, uh, macro, large wireless facilities, those are the things you see, halliway, what's called wireless. Horse structures, those big old towers, uh, the areas, radios distributed all around. So, you have to break up the terms based on the size of the actual facility. Now, mind you, as far as the technology, the technologies rather exhausted, so you may find, for instance, four G LPE on a large tower, you're also gonna start seeing that same technology in small wireless facilities. And then it's also all setting up out of five G, which if the technology requires a lot more of these wireless facilities, small wireless, um, to get the kind of coverage and reliability of five G and now-
That's, I just really made it a very, very brokefield understanding.
Can you move back to the-
Of course.
So, basically, the only area where we would be prohibited is under a, a zoning classification, which is the single-family dwelling.
Correct. That's what HB nineteen one, nineteen ninety-one allows to do.
But, most of the city doesn't fall into a single-family dwelling zone, right? And so, uh, I'm just thinking, because I represent a neighborhood where you can buy a, you know, two-family building for twenty thousand dollars, you know, I don't want AT&amp;T buying a two-family dwelling unit in a multi-family dwelling unit zone and just wrapping the building, and neither do I.
Wait, here's how, so, in part, some of that will be addressed in a different way, because, so here, um, the technology that we're talking about, small wireless facilities describes a certain type of technology and the size of it. It's what you call the attachment that goes onto the structure. The structure can be a utility pole, which is exempted out of their definition of a wireless support structure. Utility poles can be light poles, it could be the type of things that where, you know, the Amarin poles can be the city's poles, but wireless, so, so that gets exempted out. But wireless support structure, anything else which can include a building, is now a wireless support structure, which is prohibited in all residential zones.
So, the catch here is that because of that prohibition, if somebody wants to buy a, the way a wireless support structure is defined, as a building, doesn't matter what uses. Um, so, if somebody, like AT&amp;T, were to buy a house and deploy and attach a small wireless facility to it, that just became a wireless support structure, the building itself.
Right, right.
The building itself just became a wireless support structure, that's not allowed.
That's not allowed in the residential zone. And then it would be a conditional use in the commercial zones, and it'll, and it'll allow use in the higher-up zones.
So, it's a prohibited, it's a-
That's what we're-
Effective, they wouldn't be able to do that. Now, the way that we had to go about that was, shall we say, creative?
Good job.
But the effective prohibition, I mean, you see what we see up there, but the effective result of those changes to the zoning code is that you can't do exactly what you, what you just mentioned. You couldn't go out, buy a property, and attach a bunch of antennas to it, because as soon as you attach that first, small wireless facility, or a radio or antenna, is now a wireless support structure, you got your cover to go on now.
So, you put these small wireless facilities on utility poles and, you know, the light structures and everything else, which we think is what they're gonna go after initially in the first place, because they have to deal with leases or, you know, buying property otherwise. So, they're gonna go after that because it's less expensive initially. And it allows them to control the area for a longer period of time, because it's right of way. But, yeah, this could happen, and that's why we're writing it that way.
Yeah, I, I just, I've dealt with all of the utilities in some form or fashion with very mean, true, built structures in residential areas at this point, so, uh, the other thing to note for anybody in here who's not aware, uh, there was a separate ordinance that was passed to deal with these in the right of way, so our traffic, our street lights, the traffic lights and things like that. There was a separate ordinance that was passed to deal with there, uh, and even, and in conjunction with that, we're currently working on new pole specs that can support any of these types of devices, so.
We'll have another bill that will be a companion bill that will be in the zoning code that will also have concealment requirements that will mirror-
I voted no on that for this year because of my concerns with regards to how those are concealed in the Florida press. So, which I know you're aware of. Um, I mean, and also, which I don't believe was discussed at that particular Board of Aldermen meeting, but most of the light poles in the city of St. Louis are over forty years old, if not over fifty years old, and starting to like hang things on to light poles. Which is why we're gonna be retiring and replacing poles. There're gonna be attachments to our wireless facilities too, meaning now our current poles are aging. I mean, the pole heads in particular are not very precarious. The- And the new specs are not just for poles attached to our small wireless facilities, but also for poles that the city wanna be replacing, for technology deployment, so. So, the concealment of these things is not going to be anything like concealing any of these things, right? Glad you heard that thing.
So, you wanna run through your others? Cause I think they're all the same changes, is that clear?
They're separate amendments.
Right.
So, you have to go down them each separately. Uh, but I can run through all four, and if you wanna do four of those in a row, I think it's for-
Yeah, yeah, let's run through all four and then we come back. Cause they're, I'm saying, the changes are the same in each amendment, am I clear?
They all accommodate the same-
Okay.
They derive from this.
Reform.
Okay.
Uh, so, next one here, uh, is for the light house FUD. It's an existing special use district, so this is a text amendment to that established light house area as special use district. The subject site is shown on the screen here. It's on the northernmost point of the city. Uh, as we discussed, the city is unable to regulate micro and wireless facilities, please, outside of the A single-family zone. So, the proposed amendment strikes the cell phone transmitters on buildings as a conditional use in the established FUD. The red line's there for you. By removing this use as a conditional use in the FUD legislation, uh, they will fall back to the underlying zoning, which is H, commercial, on the subject site, and you can see how that will affect the existing zoning.
So, let's, go back to that. So, it's P, C, C and C, and, uh-
Not a lot.
Oh, uh, and so, the, the, I'm gonna ask, uh, just a little indulgence for a conversation that's been occurring about this one, about the towers themselves. And Rebecca Wright of the City Council and I talked a little bit about the gentleman that visited with us and given, uh, Cecilia some comments about concerned about towers and migratory birds, um, which is a concern. And I think, as you see, what your action is tonight is just removing the allowance of something, uh, that we're gonna give Rebecca his business card so she can have a conversation with him. And Rebecca is, was telling me the other room, it's really gonna happen on what occurs in the H zone.
Correct. So, you know, obviously, he's concerned about, about the height, you know, and that impact on, I believe, the migratory birds. We have to allow small wireless facilities on utility poles, so whatever's gonna be allowed on utility poles will be allowed, and then it will default back to the zoning code, um, from that point forward, and what we just talked about. It would be, a wireless support structure would be a conditional use in the H zone, so we would have to discuss at that, you know, like, you know, the condition in such a way, if they have a concern about that or not allow it, that would probably be the most likely situation. Um, you know, it, I can talk to him and see if there's other things that could be done.
And then formal with that-
Right.
Process. Good. Excellent.
So, PDA staff has reviewed the proposed amendments and found that they are, they are just new green.
are reasonably green, and therefore staff recommends approval. The next item is the Central West End Form-Based District, which currently regulates wireless facilities. The subject site of the area is shown on the screen here. The amendment proposes the following changes, a change to the definition section of the Form-Based District to expressly exclude wireless facilities and or wireless support structures, which shall be regulated by the underlying zoning district from utility communication uses. And the amendment proposes to strike cell phone towers as a use in the utility communication base table, which currently regulates them as conditional in all of the Form-Based District And just so that you guys know what's going on here, this is a map of the current underlying zoning district, and the table shows how the zoning tax amendment would affect the Given that we are updating the Form-Based District document by reviewing and replacing the Warrenville attach, the attachments to the Warrenville, there have been two Form-Based District designation rezonings, not the current zoning, but the Form-Based District zone, and those are outlined on the map, shown with the respective approved ordinances provided. We have therefore updated all the map documents, which have been affected by those two designations rezonings. So I should just clear that we have always kept an up-to-date regulating plan available under the Form-Based District Regulation Code, but now that we're updating the document itself, we want to make sure that it's consistent with that regulating plan. So there are 17 maps that have been updated, all both of them fairly quickly, fairly briefly. The regulating plan, and then these are the three types of districts that were amended, so the Neighborhood General Site One, Neighborhood General Site Three, and Neighborhood Center Site One map. And then additionally, a number of the maps are provided, which show which chooses are allowed where, and therefore, the affected building development standard maps in Chapter Four of the District Regulations have been updated, so there are...
So will be updated as a result, but they've changed in activity, but we're now going to change the document.
Correct.
And the maps themselves, as posted.
So PDA staff has reviewed the proposed amendments and found that they are not complex with the loop, and therefore, staff recommends approval. The last item is similar to the Central West End without the map. It is for the Forest Park Southeast Form-Based District. The subject site of the area is shown on the screen here, and the utility communication uses definition similarly has also been updated to exclude wireless facilities and or wireless support structures, and refers back to the underlying zoning district, and the table strikes the cell phone transmitters on buildings and cell towers from the table as well. This is a map of the current underlying zoning district, and how the table shows how that would affect the subject site. PDA staff has reviewed the proposed amendments and found that it is not complex with the loop, and we recommend approval. Those are all of the zoning related to the cell wireless facilities.
I will entertain any questions at this time.
Do you want to do them one at a time?
Yeah, we have to do it one at a time, so.
Okay.
AKA, item six.
Let's see, 00219, DXT, that is the, what's it called? Is there a name for these?
You just used the number.
Yeah, 19, okay. Does it move a second? Call for previous roll. Hearing no objection.
Uh, Alderman.
Call for previous call. Hearing no objection. Previous roll passes on 19. The second one is number 3517 SUD.
3517.
3517 SUD. Does the move a second?
I'm doing it out of order, but yeah.
Yeah, I just grabbed, that was the next one I just grabbed.
But, in order.
David's doing things live on the computer, if you do them...
The minutes are going to be mixed up. It would be nice if you did them in the order.
Okay, then which one? Which one?
Number seven.
15-17.
15-17. Move and approve. Call for previous roll. Hearing any objections? Hearing none, 17 passes. Next one, David?
100-12.
Move and approve. All previous roll, any objections? Hearing none, 112 passes.
35-17.
Move and approve. Is the move approved? Call for previous roll. Previous roll, any objections? Hearing none, 3517 SUD passes. Fire. Man, you are good, move yourself. But we still have some stuff that we have to do.
Yep. Folks, you have three action items still to do, and we'll need to have an executive session.
So next action item is...
Number 10.
Would you want to, would you like me to? For the SUD NGA?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Thank you, folks, for coming, I see.
Yeah.
So, the next item on your agenda is for a special-use district, which you have already reviewed and recommended approval to the Board of Aldermen. The subject site of the map is shown above, map of the subject site. The resolution was moved and approved to recommend approval to create an overlay zoning district for the NGA Protection and Enhancement Zone, Special Use District. This was done on December 6 of 2017, Law Order 59979, City Code Section 26.92.020. Any change in the form of an ordinance shall be introduced into the Board of Aldermen within one year from the date of the Planning Commission finding and recommendation that year attached. And so, I have attached the same resolution which you modified last year, and we would like to ask that you might reaffirm and verify that the proposed zoning code amendment is still your recommendation. PDA staff finds that the zoning text of geography is the NGA Protection Enhancement Zone, Special Use District is in general conformity with the Strategic Land use plans, the adopted neighborhood plans, and the redevelopment plans.
Any questions on the 9617s? Commissioner Boyd?
Okay, so, this may be off-subject, but I remember a lot of controversy over this within the Third Ward, and maybe the Fifth Ward, and there was some conflict with SLD getting the Alderman, so, there are comments in the meeting of the minds...
So the essence is, there is yet to be a coming of the meetings of the minds, but our action expired...
Okay.
In December, so we're re-upping our action, so when they come to the meeting of the minds, they may be back to us, they may just delete some things, or they may be back to us and recommend some more changes, but that hasn't occurred yet, but we can't, we can't let it expire.
Not changing anything that hasn't already existed.
We have, not changing anything that hasn't already existed.
Renewing ordinance.
Yeah.
But was there an ordinance that was passed?
No, no, that's, that's the key part, we missed that.
That's the problem.
Is, is, is it, it got pulled from the, from the Board of Aldermen during the last session.
Right.
Has yet to be introduced in the new session because of all the things you're alluding to, but our action as a planning commission only had a 12-month life, expiring in December, so we're asking you to renew your action.
So what would happen if we don't renew it today? Or in three months?
It lessens flexibility to deal with the topic, is number one. Number two, it could get introduced again, just as we have it, and it would keep us from having to come back to the Planning Commission to get, to redo it again, but I think at some point, there will be a compromise that will be recommended, and David will tell me if they only delete, David won't tell me this, because our, our action has expired, it would force it to come back to us. Is that right, Holly?
That, that, exactly right. It was, it was good until it wasn't.
Okay, so hypothetically, we pass this, and, I mean, just my conversation with Alderman Bowsley, for example, of one person who really, his constituents, he said, had really exceptions to something, seemed like it was being shoved down their throat without a lot of community engagement.
And SLDC has been out for 11 months, community engagement, they haven't come to, come to deal.
Okay, but I guess the concern is, if, if we make a decision to approve this, and then two months later, they say, I want to delete it, it's going to come right back, right?
Not necessarily a deletion. Okay. But our action has expired. If they delete something now, it has to come back because our original action expired. If we continue it, and they delete something, they can continue and go on.
And what are we doing again?
We're just re-upping the clock.
Keeping it as it is.
Keeping it as it is for the moment, but it's expired without us doing that.
Okay.
So that they can have the conversation on the issue, because they can't have the conversation on it right now.
Right, okay.
That's number one. Number two is, remember, this is for a half-mile around the NGA zone. The SUD had multiple components to it, some of it is for the benefit of the NGA in that sale, and some of it was perceived to be for the benefit of the community in using the SUD as a tool to upgrade the zoning tool, zoning code. That ended up being controversial and not particularly well worked out and vetted in the community of attempted to do that. We're still obligated as a city to keep moving forward, to do the things that the NGA has promised or expected from us, and you'll, yeah, we'll be with that. Okay.
So, any more questions, I will entertain a motion. Just a little second to mix up the recommendations for 96-17 SUD.
I'm going to reject the previous roll.
Okay, call for both, please.
Alderman Boyd.
I'm staying.
Alderman Cohen.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Vines.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
Motion passes with seven voting aye, and two abstentions.
And I do understand, we understand your abstentions from that.
Remember, the SUD never, never...
The next, the next item.
All right. The next action item on your agenda is for a lighting study and redevelopment plan for 5539 through 5551, 13th Avenue. The subject site is on the screen now. The proposal is to construct 149-unit apartment buildings at approximately $32.1 million on a vacant lot in the Oliver Place neighborhood. You can see the current rendering of the proposed building on the screen here. I will go through images of the area fairly quickly in numerical order, beginning with the subject site and working my way around the west, south, east, north, and I've included a couple images of the nearby points of interest. This is the subject site, which is currently vacant, with the exception of a parking lot on the northeast portion, which is to remain in place. The rest to the west are a number of three-story, six-unit buildings. To the south across the street are a few five- and six-story apartment buildings. Still across the street, just moving each way, is a newly constructed six-story multifamily building. Directly to the east of the subject site is a three-story, six-unit multifamily building, a number of them. Moving to the northeast are similar, three-story, six-unit multifamily structures, and the same on the north and northwest side. Additionally, both of these are the same city blocks, going to the west, and also retailing uses west, going to the west of the site. The subject site is designated as Neighborhood Preservation Area and is surrounded by the same designation. The designation calls for the augmentation of new and so residential development, which is what is being proposed. Additionally, the commission has approved two prior lighting study and redevelopment plans for this area in the past. In 2014, the commission reviewed and approved the lighting study and redevelopment plan to renovation of the existing five- and six-story apartment buildings across the street, and in 2015, a redevelopment plan and lighting study was approved for a seven-story mixed use building with 165 apartments, both of which we showed pictures for earlier. Staff has reviewed the proposed lighting study and redevelopment plan against the city's Strategic Land Use Plan and finds that it is in conformity with the Strategic Land Use Plan, Neighborhood Preservation Area, and recommends approval.
Is this the same petition, or did the other two?
It's not the same name, but I have an understanding of the...
All right. I'll entertain any questions, if this one's a staff.
I have a question.
It was brought to my attention by one of my colleagues before I came to the meeting,
the developer owes $174,000 in taxes.
Okay, we made that known.
So, yeah, go ahead.
So, the new, the project that's recently completed, or maybe it's still in, is that, that's the 26th ward, is that correct? The brand-new project, so across the street is the 28th ward, is that correct? Because it says, Alabama, Alabama, or 10-year tax abatement. If I remember correctly, there was some controversy within, I guess, that Skid Devolver neighborhood, is that correct?
Well, Devolver.
Huh?
Skid Devolver is the city neighborhood to the west of Devolver Place.
Okay, okay, but it was my understanding that the people in the 28th ward were pretty opposed to the tax abatement, if I remember correctly, it got like 15 or 20 years tax abatement, which was pretty rich for that particular neighborhood. I'm curious as to if we were looking at the map currently that we've been working off of about where tax abatement would be appropriate in certain neighborhoods, I would probably doubt if it fits that matrix.
The old building or the new?
The new map, the this proposed project. Even that, yeah, that probably wouldn't make the matrix either, but I'm focusing on the now.
The new, the map is a creature of the Board of Aldermen and LCRA, and it's for only projects under a million.
Okay, under a million. Okay, well, this is over a million, and it's even better, was our concern, because I've, with the type of development that's going on in those particular neighborhoods, I cannot imagine, right now, that tax abatement would be appropriate under any circumstances whatsoever, and I'm very surprised that my colleague from the 28th would support this. I will call her after this meeting, because I know her stance has been pretty much anti-tax abatement, and so on and so forth, so I'm very surprised that the Central West End is again looking for 10-year tax abatement in a very rich, you know, neighborhood, especially not far from Whole's Food, which got a TIF of, probably was like 40 million, if I remember reading correctly, and it sold for 80 million or some ridiculous amount, you know, within five years or so. There, there is no way that I would support that. Well, okay, Stephanie, thank you, but it's Central West End. Thank you for the question, but there is no way, there is absolutely no way I would support tax abatement on this project.
So guess what I have to do? So guess what I have to do? Our standard thing, that the tax abatement aspect is not in the purview of the House.
But it's not even blighted, as was Officer Don, because...
So, yes, you're welcome to talk about the blight and you're welcome to talk about compliance with the plan. Staff will tell you that, as a, that, you see, we did the mailing last Thursday. They were very polite in that, and this is the copy of the redevelopment plan, they were far more polite than I wanted it to be, is it says at the top, "Received by PDA on 1/3/2019. Action at the LCRA board on November 15." And we need them, they're supposed to come to us for our review, as a recommendation on the Board of Alderman. Cecilia had to bug and bug to say, "You're saying you're sending that to us." We got it, we got it the day it was mailing, this was attached to it after she had put the resolution together. It still, like, holds, but I'm not the happiest with LCRA.
There is no way, and I'm not trying to be a butthole, but there is no way that this is blighted. I'm sorry. It's not.
I have a question, is there someone here to, from the development?
No.
So, and to add a caveat to that, I will entertain the motion made whenever that may be.
So, we'll get into a slippery slope about blight. Now, I'm claiming it's blighted.
But that's their choice.
Well, logically, you're right, technically, it's blight. Thursday's law, I guess, is what it is. But I get what you're saying.
Yeah, we, so we didn't even get the blighting report from them until, so it's a vacant lot. And it has not been introduced at the Board of Alderman yet.
And I understand that we could say no and that board bill could move forward, but I think we'd have a hard time passing Board of Alderman.
So, mechanics are, it was at LCRA, they're sending it on to us. I'm really irritated that it took us, took six, five weeks to get it to us, for Cecilia to look at it and send it to you. We got it to you, so it could be a recommendation of the Planning Commission and still be involved in this Alderman accession. You guys can do whatever you want.
I move that we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait a minute, hold it, hold it, just because it's Don speaking. David, I made this expression that the Planning Commission can do whatever they want. Did you legally say that?
Regarding their recommendation.
We got it.
We can make the recommendation if we qualify. Yeah. Commissioner Cohen, headache.
Well, I mean, this would likely, either my committee or whoever is in the committee, it is a treaty session. That being said, so, has the developer had a conversation with anyone in the planning department about whether or not?
No.
There's been a conversation?
Oh, LCRA, I assume, passed.
Did the LCRA, if anyone was present during that meeting, did they ask whether or not any of this was necessary in order for this development?
They did not.
Okay, well, that's my question and it's a very...
Okay, so the recommendation on behalf of staff, or data says that the Planning Commission finds said blighted study in the redevelopment plan for the 5539 through 5551 Pershing Avenue redevelopment area to be recommended, declared as blighted and proposed development plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plan for neighborhood preservation area and therefore recommends approval to the Board of Alderman for the City of San Antonio. That is the staff recommendation. I will entertain the motion, place the floor.
I move that we not approve PDA-003-19-RDR.
Second, it's been moved as second is that we cannot accept the staff recommendation on the PDA, not on the 19-RDR. Call for a vote please.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Vines.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Chair Stroud.
Aye.
And the motion to not approve passes unanimously.
Which means that the Alderman can do whatever they choose to do. They can respond to that bill.
But when LCRA prepares the bill, it has to say negative...
The board bill will have to reflect that the Planning Commission did not recommend...
Did not recommend.
Recommend it. Whatever. That would be interesting.
It's, I mean, certainly it's happened before, but it has been...
Okay, so we're in the home stretch. But we're not...
We still have a, we will still need a committee of meetings.
So, we need to have another meeting of the Planning Commission this month. We need it before the 15th. We highly recommend that it be the 14th, which is a week from tonight. Want to get your blessing as to what that time is on the 14th.
I'm off today, Don.
Staff says I'm off.
Not a good day for you there.
So, putting pressure on the follow-up plan.
Not ideal for me.
What time?
Not ideal, it says.
I have another neighborhood meeting, I can't do it by over that night.
Want to do 4:00 instead?
I can do, um...
I've got 5:00.
An update in general. Tuesday is early.
10:00.
Tuesday's a little bit challenging.
The 14th is a Monday.
So I'm trying to find the, the 14th. We have to do it before the 15th.
Oh, I'm fine. And I'll make it work.
4:30.
5:30, 5:30?
Yes.
Denise is gone. Patrick, Patrick, to a hair of thorns for 5:30?
I can make it work.
Okay.
I have, I have. I'm fine with six.
Six works. How's the meeting?
LCRA is going to make a presentation on a 222, 200-acre redevelopment plan in the Dutchtown area.
Is Roman going to use every parcel of Dutchtown?
LCRA is going to make the presentation. But of course, what you asked earlier is that we go through every parcel.
I don't even want this, so...
I don't want it.
Is this something you've been asking for?
No, this is the mayor's office trying to placate me on a whole issue.
So, I'm sorry.
As far as I'm concerned, we don't need the presentation, but it's a legal office using it, so we need to do the presentation then.
Well, let's put it this way. Here's the difficulty, is we're still trying to get their items from the December meeting and we have to act on the items from the December meeting.
I might have to wait until the 14th.
By the 14th, so...
I know it's on the January 16 calendar, what else? I'm sorry, I know, but wait until March.
We still need a meeting that night, the 14th.
The other items.
Can we work on a consensus for that night?
6:00 is what I'm hearing.
6:00?
Yeah.
6:00?
How early?
6:00 is fine with me.
Okay, and Cecilia's going to whisper to me and remind me... Oh, yeah, okay. So, one, we're going to do the other redevelopment plans from LCRA December meeting. They are going to be shortened, highlighted presentations, because we don't have them all yet, so they're going to be quick and short. We have a rezoning petition that's in the NGA area. It's a challenging one, we're going to need you to look at that. And then we have a demolition appeal, and that's the reason why we're going to go into executive session.
At this point, we...
So, we got a consensus for 6:00?
We need to move into an executive closed session.
And that is to address Communications Council under 610-021-sub1.
So does it require a vote?
Yes, it does.
Roll focus.
Zach, it...
The second is you go into closed session and we have a vote.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Vines.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
And I'm going to mute this, because this goes online, I think I'm going to mute it so there's no risk.
Yeah, please do.